Like in the back, we prettyed up the warehouse. And then put a like a little port sort of sort of coating on it. And that's where they're going to put their like. Lawn and garden center and then in between.
A sports car.
The warehouse and kind of the other parking lot is going to be a big greenhouse. It's going to be a lawn and garden. As well. But the very front. But the very front where we cleaned up. Building in there. I just don't know what's like. I think it.
We're an amazing community.
Something simple. Where I went.
There you go. There you go.
We could, we could do that. You know, we build those things honestly. We just.
All right.
We're looking at a building.
We got a gap. I hate to interrupt this good social time. It is seven P M. And I'll call this meeting at the very city council order on this Tuesday, November first, twenty twenty two. At seven P M. Uh, city council presence tonight include uh, councillor Tom Logan, councillor Sam Stockwell, councillor Teddy Was as I. Councillor Michael Booton, councillor Mel Shon Bell, councillor. Michael Dearing staff joining us tonight. We have the city manager, Charlie Castro, for treasure Dawes. Uh, we have Jeff Berger on, uh, Janet Chetney, Stephanie. And uh, is there anybody else?
Don.
Don, Don's online. And so welcome everybody. Um, this meeting has been uh, publicly posted. Their agenda is available in the back of the room and online. This is being recorded and broadcast and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and the council's rules and procedures which are available. Online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to all the guests joining us uh, here in person and online. And if you're joining us online, please keep in mind that the chat function should only be used for technical issues or difficulties. The city offers online access as a convenience. And we'll continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. If you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand or signal that you would like to be. That to speak and those in the room should come to the front table here at the microphone. Um, I'll call on speakers in order, calling on those who haven't uh, spoken yet to speak first in limiting time if necessary to do the city's business. Uh, please state your name for the record and speak into the microphone. So everybody can hear you. I want to thank everybody advanced for participating in a civil. Uh, in respectful manner. And if you have any questions about process or procedure, please ask and we'll get it sorted. That takes us to adjustments to the agenda. Uh. Manager stroke.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one adjustment requested a new consent item for F, which would be an authorization to execute a contract with the uh, Berry Rotary Club for use of the second floor of the Wheelock House. Uh, through May thirty first, same terms at. The same terms as their prior uh, lease.
Uh, so that's item F. Are there any other changes from council? Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to visitors and communication. This is an opportunity to speak to an item um, that is not on the agenda tonight.
Seeing none online.
Seeing and hearing none. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have. Um, several items. We have approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Approval of the warrants from the week of Wednesday, November second, twenty twenty two. Uh, are there any? No, no licenses or permits. We have ratification of authorization. For the city manager to execute the Wheelock House lease extension as well as the authorization. To execute the extension for the rotary through May thirty first in the same. Location. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Question by councillor Wazak.
Second.
Second by councillor Dearing. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Any comments from the public? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed. You guys have it. The consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to item five on the agenda, the city clerk and treasurer's report.
Mr. Rare.
I was looking for it.
Side warrants. Um, let's see a few things. Uh, we're exactly one week away from uh, the general election. As a matter of fact, at this time in seven days, it'll be over. So. There's that. So, um, we have just want to give you some numbers. Um, we have mailed out uh. Four thousand six hundred and ninety nine ballots. Um, we have received back fourteen hundred and ninety six. I rounded them up for forty seven hundred out and fifteen hundred back. Um, and we also have received a bunch back uh, as undeliverable because of people moving and changes of address. We've got uh, three hundred and forty nine of those that have come back undeliverable. Um, we're actually keeping them um, handy because what we're finding is that there are some that have been uh, returned to us as undeliverable where people are still here and still at that address, but the um. The mailing didn't include an apartment number. So what we're doing is we're getting phone calls from people or people stopping by saying, hey, I should have gotten the ballot. And if we're able to find their ballot in that. Um, that tray, then we're able to uh, reissue it to the, to the voter. So, so that's been nice to be able to do that. Um, the it, it's not too late to request an absentee ballot. Uh, we're still mailing absentee ballots to new voters as they are registering here in Berry City. We are getting close to the time where probably at the time where um, it uh, it might be difficult to mail the ballot to the voter and get it back by mail. Uh, but of course we do have the drop boxes, uh, one on the front of city hall, one behind city hall. And people can bring their ballots to the polls on next Tuesday. Um, you can also have somebody else bring the ballot either in here or to the polls. Uh, that is certainly acceptable. Um, you can also bring your ballot to the polls and vote it at the polls and feed it into the tabulator. So there's lots of different options for um. For getting your ballots to the polls. I sent something out on front porch forum last week, just to let people know what the different options are. So. The board of civil authority is meeting this Thursday at six o'clock here um, to uh, for the typical pre-election meeting. Um, and in addition to approving election workers, we're going to review our election procedures to just make sure that. Um, that we're uh. We're solid on what the rules are for the polling place so that we can provide um, updated information to um, to people. Who are up there campaigning or. Poll watching or whatever it might be. We want to make sure that uh, that everybody understands what the, what the procedures are um, that are allowed. And. Uh, I want to let people know that the winter parking ban goes into effect on the fifteenth. As the manager crosses that off his list. Uh, what that means is it goes into effect at twelve oh one A M. On the fifteenth. This is something we went back and forth with for a while. We wanted to make sure that everybody understands that's when the fifteenth starts. So it goes into effect on November fifteenth. Um, the, the police department is really good about issuing um, notices uh, for the week leading up to it and then for the first week. Um, so that people uh, understand what's going on. We do also spread the word through our website, Facebook and front porch forum and so. But we want people to understand that once the winter parking ban is in effect, that means that you can't park on the city streets or in the city parking lots from one A M. To six A M. Um, until April first. So it's in effect until April first. Uh, and this is to make sure that the um, public works department can deal with uh, snow events during the winter when they have to plow and keep. Roadways open enough for emergency vehicles, et cetera. So. Um, I think that's everything that I've got.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the clerk treasurer? All right. Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to uh, the liquor control cannabis control board. And tonight we have two. Uh, licenses from director Chetney uh, for manufacturing, right?
We have one.
Oh, one. I'm sorry. One license.
Yep.
Class two license.
One, one from, from me. Yeah, yeah. Um, the actually the, the zoning license was included in the zoning report. Um, for Green Mountain Hash. Uh, they've been issued their zoning um, license. Um, and now the, sorry, their zoning permit and they are in front of you this evening for um, their uh, manufacturer tier two license. Um, because there is a fifteen day waiting period with a zoning permit. Um, but I, but we're, we're not meeting council isn't meeting next week. And then the following meeting on the fifteenth is, is a different format. I didn't want to hold them up. So what my um, suggestion to the council is going to be approval. Um, and the approval going into effect at the end of the fifteen day waiting period, which will be next week. So. We do have, I believe, representatives here from um, from Green Mountain Hash. They were going to zoom in. So I'm waiting to. And and councillor Loz on is sneaking out. Uh, so. So who do we have for from Green Mountain Hash on the Zoom?
That would be me, Justin.
Hi, Justin.
Hi Carolyn. Thank you for your correspondence earlier.
Sure. Um, this is an opportunity part of the, the council's process with um, liquor or cannabis licenses is to invite new license holders to come. Uh, meet the council, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your business um, before they consider the um, the application. So have at it.
Okay, um, so our company is fairly small. Um, it's myself, my business partner, Adam, and my wife Hope. Um, I run the manufacturing aspect of it. Um, and they take over the administrative and. Marketing aspects of the business. Um, the business itself is mostly a tolling venture. Um, our plan is to be processing um. In the majority outdoor crops uh, for growers in the um, two to three tier area. Uh, in order to make products for themselves in a solventless manner. We specifically do solventless and mechanical processing. Um. One, because we believe it creates a superior, high quality or enjoyable product. Um, and two, uh, the methods. Used to do so are far more environmentally friendly, or at least can be tailored towards uh, environmentally friendly.
Well, thank you for the introduction. Are there any questions from council?
Councillor Booton. Um, so it's again, I'm going to abstain from it, but the, the question that I have is regarding the smell. Um. I assume you're going to have the same precautions as the last person?
Yes, we do have the same precautions as we are in the same location. Um, as well as the process itself is based around preserving those aromatic and flavorful compounds that you would smell. Um, so it, it. Process is meant to keep those contained and out of people's noses until the point of sale.
Okay.
Oh, councillor Dearing.
Are you guys working with the other establishment that's in town as well?
Yes, Forebun's finest, unless there's another I'm unaware of.
Okay. Uh, and my second question is, uh, you said that you could potentially be using uh, better earth friendly procedures. Um, is that something that you guys are going to be doing? Or is that something that you're looking at doing?
Uh, it's something we have to work individually farmer to farmer. Um, what I'm referring to specifically is our solvent quote unquote water. Um, at the end of its usage essentially becomes a very complex nutrient plant tea. Um, and if the logistics can be figured out from farmer to farmer, or at the very least with the building we're in with. Um, it can be used as a very potent fertilizer, uh, reducing carbon impact and also reusing that water one more time.
And I guess my question is, is that something that you guys are going to be doing at the facility in Berry?
Uh, not immediately, but it's our, in our uh, action plan to do so. That, that's something I'm working on specifically. In the meantime, we're working with rainwater to reduce our impact.
Got no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions here. Well, thank you for the introduction. And just for the record, councillor, we're accusing you as because of a conflict of interest in this case. Okay, but. Well, are you, you're going to be the landlord, right? Yeah.
The process is occurring at a facility that we.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for doing that.
Can I ask one more question?
Councillor.
So it, the products that you guys are kind of going to be producing, are they going to be the products that are going to be sold at the next? I'm assuming that, that somebody's going to be coming to us to say, hey, we'd like to retail uh, sell cannabis and these products. Um, is that? You know, what's going to be down the, you know, down the line with this product?
Uh, I'm not entirely sure I understand the question.
Okay, so you guys are working with the other individual in town. Um, the or and you guys are the manufacturer. Um, correct?
Yes.
Of the pro, from the product. So then the product will be sold a, at a dispensary. That I'm been heard in the community that will be located at, at L and M diner.
Um, that's a separate.
Is that a, okay. So I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
If that was all going to be. You know, because I didn't understand at first that number one, the, the last application we approved was also working with this applicant as well. Um, not that I have a problem with that, but I, I just. Out of transparency, I'm curious, you know, because I know that down the road, we are going to be looking at uh, a facility where there will be retail cannabis being sold. Um, so I'm just. Asking the questions.
And just for point of process, the retail is a completely separate license that we have to come back before the council anyway, right? Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. The bureaucracy.
So there's a zoning permit that's issued. It's a, it's in the appeal period. Uh, the recommended motion is to uh. Condition the license upon or make that license or, or approval as a body.
Yeah.
Effective upon in, or in tandem with the expiration of the appeal period for the zoning permit?
Yes, yeah. So moved. Second.
Motion by councillor Wazak, second by councillor Dearing to approve the manufacturing license. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Stain.
One extension noted. And uh, Justin, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
And investing in Berry.
You're very welcome.
Justin, I will be um, uh, sending the approval notification to the Vermont Cannabis Control Board um, after the zoning permit. Window has closed. So next Wednesday, I think, because Tuesday is the election and I'm going to be busy. So. Next Wednesday. So, and I will see.
Good luck.
I think, yeah, I will see see uh, uh, notification to you, to you. So.
All right. Thank you very much, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That takes us to item seven on the agenda, the city managers report.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, couple items uh, to supplement the department head reports. Just uh, we uh, this afternoon had to issue a boil water advisory for the city of Berry. Um, we pushed this out through social media. It's on our website. Uh, we did a V T alerts uh, happened around two P M. So. Um, if uh, in, in city Berry boil your water uh, before drinking it. Uh, there's two, as I said, two water main breaks. One is on Circle and Hail Street. Crews are still working there right now. Stop there before coming in and they're. Working hard trying to get to the bottom of the problem. The other on Summer and uh, Summer Street and Keith Avenue and I believe they're starting to work on repairs. So that one is, is starting to get addressed. Uh, so folks will see some increase in color in their water. And uh, there are residences that have had full shut offs um, as well. So we will uh, keep all our platforms updated um, for when um, the advisory is lifted. Um. And uh, just item number two is uh, great events uh, this weekend uh, for trick or treaters. Uh, parade, the, the main street trick or treating. Um, great crowds. Um, we did have just unfortunately one, one incident with an eleven year old child. Uh, who was struck on, on North uh, Main and Seminary that some folks may have heard about. Um, child was treated. Uh, so I want to thank uh, our, our first responders, police fire. Uh, we're able to treat the child very quickly. Um, and thankfully the child uh, sustained. I think only minor injuries and was taken to uh, the medical, uh, central Vermont Medical Center just as a precaution. So. Um, just a reminder uh, for as we, you know, uh, prepare for next year for, for events and activities and trick or treaters to keep them safe. Um, but luckily a, a tragedy was avoided here. Otherwise they were wonderful events. Lots of, lots of kids out um, yesterday. Um, so I want to thank Tracy for the events. They were wonderful. Uh, I had two participants in my home that enjoyed all of them. So uh, thank you for all that work to do, put those together. Um. The clerk took my uh, parking ban note, so I will uh, skip that one. Um, and uh, just a reminder, we do not uh, uh. Part of the reason I wanted to talk about is because we don't have a council meeting next week, uh, which I believe uh, Carol may have mentioned. Um, and the fifteenth uh, going on to the, the last item to update. Um, will be a joint uh, council meeting slash ARPA engagement forum. Um, so very excited about that. That will, both events will be happening at Alumni Hall. Um, and so um, we uh, just ARPA engagement update overall, um, as we. Uh, asking for letters of interest due tomorrow. If they trickle in a little bit after that, we'll do our best to include them in the survey, but really. The due date for tomorrow was so that we could incorporate um. Concepts, ideas from those letters of interest into the survey. We will do the best we can for anything that trickles afterwards. We, we just can't make promises on it. Um. And please, I, I hope. I wonder if people are just waiting for the last possible minute. We've only, we've received less than ten. So um, please get those in if you're working on them. Um. The survey um, will go live on um, Wednesday, the ninth, uh, November ninth on our website. Um, we'll also get that out through our, all our social media platforms. Um, we will be handing out some uh, a flyer for it at our uh, at the election, pending approval of the board of civil authority for that material. Just to get the word out. Um, and so um. That will go live on the ninth. It'll be open till December seventh. And as I mentioned. Forum um, on. The fifteenth um. At Alumni Hall, that's Tuesday. Uh, and we will have a council meeting. I'm hoping at six P M. Or so and uh, looking to start the form around six thirty. But we will make sure that that information is on the flyer and our social media platforms. But that is the, the target at the moment. So. That is it for me.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for manager? Councillor Wazak.
Yeah, just a logistical question. So your uh, runoff show for like a better term for the fifteenth would be six to six thirty. Just get through the city business.
Yes.
The warrants and stuff and then.
Exactly.
Thirty. Okay. Yep. Just me and your.
Just with regard to the water main breaks, are there a lot of areas that are without water pressure right now?
Um, there, there were growing areas because they tried to locate the issue. They've had to shut off um, uh, water for more and more houses. So I don't have a, a number from Bill, but I know that unfortunately that. Number kept creeping up as they were trying to locate the, the issue, the source of the issue.
Yeah. Do they know how long there will be no water pressure?
Bill was, is hopeful, assuming that um, the issue can I be identified on Circle and Hill Street that uh, they'll have to do testing. They have to do two rounds of testing tomorrow, get two clearances of that. Um, so it may be late tomorrow that we lift it for the boiler. Yeah.
The, the water pressure. The only reason being this time of year, heating systems depend on pressure to function. Without what if there, if it's a, you know, water heating system, it requires pressure or it won't function.
I, I believe that the hope is to have that up before the advisory is lifted, but I will, um, I have to ask Bill for the specifics on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I spoke with, with Bill about it because I live in that neighborhood. Um, and one of the, one of the issues that's making it uh, a little more complicated and making it more urgent and why they're really working to get it fixed is that. They're not able to do a sort of a shut off to. Isolate the area that needs to be repaired. Um, and that's why it's more broadly spread for the, the area that's actually out. Um, but they're, they're working on it hard to get it fixed as soon as possible.
Oh, and just a public service announcement? A friend of mine was gloating that. Uh, that there's no boil water notice in Berry Town. And I looked at him and I'm like. What? I'm like, it's the same system. So it does affect Berry Town, correct? I mean, there are, there are private districts within Berry Town that actually service small neighborhoods, but chances are if you live in the Draw Hill, Draw Hill area. It's the same water.
Or Beckley Hill or, yeah. It's, yeah.
And I do know that um. Occasionally we sell water to Berry Town and then they disperse it through however they do it. So those people could be, should be under that as well, correct? Yep. And uh, I think that. Even if you don't get a bill from Berry City. You might want to double check that. And we try to, I know the uh, water department is trying to craft the, the V T alerts to be. Broader than our, just out of abundance of caution for that reason.
Yeah.
Councillor Dearing.
Just one question about the accident about the Halloween. Was there a parent involved in the accident as well? Or was it just the child? I'd heard that there was a parent and the child.
I'm only aware of the child.
Okay.
Councillor Stockwell.
When the water main breaks, do we, is it predictable in some ways? Like, is it the oldest ones first? Or is there, are there other factors and we can never predict which thing is going to break next?
You know, Bill's would be the best person to answer that. Um, I think what happened today was uh, related to some of the flushing activities that were going on. So I don't know that that would have impacted the. The age of the infrastructure wouldn't have had a direct impact today. Um, just from what I've tried to absorb from, from talking to Bill about some of the issues we've faced that it, it can be. Certainly the age contributes to some of it. Um, I know that um. For example, some, sometimes it's, you know, something, it's a matter of a tree root growing into the, into the pipes. So it's, I think it's a little bit of everything today. Today wasn't specifically related to the age itself.
Thank you.
Yep.
There are no further questions. That takes us to uh, our first item of new business, which is holiday free parking request from uh, the Berry Partnership uh, delivered to us. From the manager and at the request of. Tracy Lewis, Director of the Berry Partnership. Welcome.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Um, so yes, I put in a request for uh, free parking for the holiday season uh, beginning on Thanksgiving to go through the new year. Uh, we do this. We request it every year and. Um, I think donations can go to a um, an organization that the city council chooses. Um, last year I suggested the Berry Garden Club and this year I would like to request it to go to the Renita Marshall Helping Hands Foundation because they do a lot of good work for, for Berry and, and the kids in our area.
So, um, I guess we need a, we, we, we have to a, adopt a first emotion on the um, well, first, if you have any questions. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody have question?
So moved. Second.
All right. So there's a motion to approve the parking um, uh, free parking from Thanksgiving to the year. So is there any further discussion on that one?
We want to add in there the suggestion.
Uh. I was going to split the questions. Um, normally the council has uh, made nominations, at least in my past three years or. Uh.
Okay.
The councils and I, I think uh, last year, the first year we did.
Okay. You don't have to explain. It's fine.
Yeah, we did the food bank one year. We did recreation programs one year.
Oh, yeah. And I know uh, QuikDawes has suggested the um, supporting the um, uh, heat assistance, emergency heat and fuel assistance, given the high prices of. A fuel cost this year and. Program like.
Right, right. We talked last week about um, the doing a, um. A distribution from the Keith Fund, which I will bring to. Whatever the meeting after the tw- fifteenth is.
Twenty seven to twenty nine.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Oh, right. Yeah. Okay. So the twenty ninth, I'll bring a request to the, to that meeting. So. I'd be happy.
I'd be happy to do the stickers again. Let me know when you have them.
All right.
Like to help as well, if possible.
Thank you very much.
So, so there's at least a motion and a second to approve the free parking, is there any further discussion on that question?
The only thing that I would say is that Tracy's letter said through January first. But actually, the legal holiday is January two, because that's the the Monday.
Okay.
So I would say that it would be through the Monday, so it would be, so the free parking would be through the second.
That's great, thank you, Carol.
Alright. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you guys have it, and so are there nominations for? Beneficiary organizations for the, for the parking fees that would be paid.
Sure, I'll make a motion for. Or I can make a motion.
Yeah.
Make a motion to go with Renee Helping Hands, Renita Marshall, she's going to kill me. I know. Renita Marshall's. Thank you, thank you, sorry. Wow, that was. Is she online? She is not.
To all precedents, go to the Renita Marshall Helping Hands Foundation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I'm a nay. Eyes have it, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yep. That takes us to F Y twenty four, the budget.
Tracy, just one second, have a seat. Social media was a little tough on you this morning, and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. That incident. I had to go to the bank while the trick or treaters were. You know, running about. And I got down to the bank and I had forgotten my deposit, so I had to go back home and go back. So I went through four times in the span of twenty minutes. You know, the parents were attentive, I mean, kids are kids, they were excited, parents were attentive, the, you know. Certainly couldn't have offered any improvements. And it's not lost on me that. As I, I didn't know where the incident had occurred, but as I read all of the unfair comments on social media. It made it sound like it was right in the middle of downtown, and it in fact wasn't. And they said, you know, the city should have shut down the the Main Street and the police officer should have done better, and you should have done better, and I should have done better. And the mayor should have done, and everybody should have done better, but it made it sound like the incident happened where the trick or treating occurs. Which is, you know, generally, now I'm dating myself because I don't know what bank it is now, which Chitting Bank used to be. Down, you know, to the cornerstone, and that's generally where the activities are occurring. And that unfortunate accident, I'm thrilled that the child is is going to be okay. Happened way up by Seminary Street by Bud's entire R K miles. It was Seminary Street, correct?
Yes, right near Key Bank.
Oh, by Key Bank, okay, so not quite that far up, but not, not where those activities are normally occurring.
Yeah, there is some trick or treating that still happens down there and we're aware of that, but it wasn't up in the the main area. And when we do have a request to shut down the streets, my understanding is we usually just go to Granite Street. So that the flow of traffic on the backstreets can continue, so the streets wouldn't have been shut down to where the incident was.
But, you know, I I know how hard you work, you know, and I know how much that must bother you.
Yes, I.
Thankfully.
I drove down there as soon as I heard and and made sure.
Things happen, you know, I've had had accidents, we've all had accidents that are unfortunate. And, you know, hindsight is always twenty twenty, so. I, you know, again, I just, I felt badly because there are always people who use social media as their own personal, personal bashing grounds, and I don't like it.
Yeah.
And I don't like the way you were treated and your organization was treated because I know how hard you work, so I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you, I'm just glad that the boy is is safe.
Yeah, and and since Mary Jane's here, I figured I'd ask, how long have we been doing this? So for those that couldn't hear, thirty years, and how many incidents have we had? Thirty years. Seven hundred and a thousand kids each year.
And the merchants make nothing.
Yep. Goodwill, yeah.
The smiles on the kids' faces, that's really.
And. Yeah.
Really, really good thing, and it started in the nineteen eighties.
Yeah. And you know, and and Counselor Lozona, I I agree, you can't, you can't prevent everything, I mean, even if. Even if we did shut down the 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 street, it would have happened anyway. I mean, that's, that's where we wouldn't shut down. Although I wouldn't be opposed to shutting down Main Street during that time, but. You know, it's something that we've discussed in the past and we didn't do it, so.
Well, and I think now is the time that we can discuss and and talk about future events and how we can make it safer. So I think that's what we're going to do and and go from there, so. Thank you very much.
I was just gonna.
Try and get as many people as we can, as volunteers to stand in the crosswalk and help the kids pass. And as a, as one who's done it myself, cars come at you sometimes at great next speed, even though you're standing in the middle of the road. And we can't control that, and so we try, we've had, in the past, we've had junior ROTC down here helping. We've had Norwich cadets helping, we've had merchants helping, we've had parents helping, I mean, we try every year to get the crosswalks covered.
Yep.
And it's daunting to get that many volunteers, but we have a lot of people who are there, and we are watching the crosswalks and aware. Of that there are a thousand kids on our Main Street game. So I just want to make you aware of that, but we do have volunteers to come down and help us.
And for those that are listening online, I don't know if you heard, but they do have volunteers that that participate and help with crossings, so. Thank you, and that's all organized by volun- well, Tracy.
Thank you again.
I just wanted to add to that as a father of four, that all four of my children went down, we had a great safe event, I did a couple of live feeds. On Facebook, got to see Mary Jane and got to see you Tracy and and really. A a lot of different business owners in our community came together just to have fun for our community. And to see that, to see that blessing right there, and it's just, that's what community is about. So thank you really for for everything that you put into that and that you continue to put into the partnership.
Thank you, and if if you haven't checked out on social media, I did a little bit of a reel from yesterday's events. And and it came out pretty good, so check it out. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I saw the post for the feature on your page, the Wobbie Jewelry page, of all the kids in front of the statue, really cool to see.
Thank you.
Alright, so uh, so we're going to definitely have a more, more safety focus. So that takes us to the F Y twenty four Department Budget Reviews, we're going to start with planning permitting assessing, go to buildings and. Community services and end with the Recreation Department, right?
So if I, we'll just set the table a little bit, Janet gets ready. She'll be doing similar to what Chief Vale, interim Chief Alsworth did last week. Going through high level presentation of the highlights of major components of the budget. We did provide the line by line, so Janet, myself, Donned Online are able to answer those questions as well. But we're, Janet will be focusing on sort of the the high level overview for you.
Hi, counselors. Uh, my presentation is pretty straightforward, as you know, I'm a fairly small but integral part of the city. Hope to, if you could go to the next slide. That's what I aspire to have. So right now, it's Catherine and myself. Our cost centers are listed, so if you're ever, you know, right in the weeds in the budget, you'll know exactly where to go. Let's start with assessing, as I said on the slide, that. We, we have a very minimal increase with the assessing budget from twenty three to twenty four proposed. A point four percent increase, and that's essentially, I think, attributed to salary adjustments. With the rollups that the manager and the finance director have. Completed for all, both my departments, it makes it easier to focus on, you know, the the meat of my budgets. My next slide is just some, a lot of people don't know what assessing is and what it does. And, you know, the big bad assessor says no half the time.
It runs the whole show.
I wanted to give you a bullet list of the kind of things that come out of the assessing arm of my office. It's just an F Y I, I think it's important that that folks understand what it is that, that we do. And the deadlines that we have and how we get to a grand list and how it's built. And then the myriad of deadlines from April one to August one that occur. So that was my assessing services one O one for you folks. So if you haven't had the time to read it, I highly suggest, you know, reading each of my bullet points so you understand what happens in my office. And the next, so if you go to the fun facts, I thought that might be helpful that. Some people don't know how to read a property tax bill, the tax department actually has a little. I don't think it's a PDF, I think it's an actual little presentation on how to understand your property tax bill. What does a homestead mean, what does the house site mean, what does this formula mean? And I thought it was really important to put that out there so people see that. And even the tax department is always trying to educate the general public on, on your taxes and your tax bills and what it all means, so. And statistics, you can't really tell. Because these are really finite, tiny little graphs. But it really boils down to what I wanted to show was property sales. Sales have been consistently high now for two and a half years, they are generally starting to slow down. But I can tell when my assessing clerk Catherine Berman puts together the property transfer list monthly. And she tells me how many pages it is, and she just told me October's ending with almost four pages, that means there were a lot of sales in the city. And I think that will continue even with the interest rates to climb. So the upper left hand. Chart, the the tallest number represents the actual number of sales, while the little, the little. Shows, you know, broken down by different types of homes. And then the property sales by number, it's, it's not really necessarily a chart, you can actually take the tops and draw a line across. But at least it shows. Based on the hundreds of thousands of dollars where Berry City is at year to year, and you can see how it ebbs and flows. Given the our economy and what's happening.
And if anyone is following along online and these numbers seem really small, this is all on the city website and you can zoom in on it.
Thank you. Um, any questions for me on the assessing budget? If you've all had a chance to go line by line, was, is pretty minimal changes. Okay, moving on. Planning permitting. A very minor increase in budget, I gave up some things in my endeavor to. Participate in a a healthy budget discussion at our budget congress. We had an increase, but that's because I have two unfilled positions, one of which is a brand new position. And we had to look at what salaries may, excuse me, may be required for F Y twenty four. Again, mostly, the increase is mostly attributed to salaries. I gave up some of this, you'll see in the line by line, I reduced some things and we've increased some things. So we continue to maintain and be attractive to future candidates to Berry City. And just like with assessing, I came up with some, you know, little bullet points that says this is, this is some, not all. Of the things that comes out of my office. And then I I did some more visuals for you, if you go to permitting statistics and fun facts. It shows you. Permits year by year, the, if you look at the upper left, those are your total permits, that's the line at the top. Broken down by individual types of permits in the bar graph below. And on the right hand side, those are fees collected year over year based on the type of permit, so.
Just noting that it's great to see that vacant building fee number going down.
It is, it is. Department review, next slide actually shows what overall. With the, the given, the take and where we landed. Between the two departments in my office. Any questions?
How can we get those positions filled for you?
We are working on that, I actually received an application from the H R manager that he received on Friday. So we are setting up an interview for a permanent administrator position, we'll, we'll feel that one out and see how that goes. And. The city manager, bless his heart, has resurrected a conversation with our. Consultant that's going to be doing our reappraisal. To see if they are willing to work in their schedule to help us out, when we first talked to them two years ago. They, it was an adamant no, they didn't have the time, the door is opened a little bit, so. We'll see what happens and the manager will keep us all apprised of his, his progress.
Yeah, I'm really hoping that. That we get something there, I, you know, and and Janet knows this, it won't be the entirety of the assessment services that we need. But if it's, you know, four hours a week, eight hours a week, whatever it is, it's four more hours that. That Janet doesn't have to put into that work and helps us and helps the office, so.
Helps the grand list.
Exactly.
Any questions? Janet, I had a question about, it's more of an operational question, I was just curious, so with, with the sales volumes up. And sale prices up, how does that, how does that get into the, the grand list? When one of those property transfer tax cards come in, does the lister's card get updated at that point? Or is there like a lag between those two things?
So it gets updated with the basics, right?
Yeah.
But I am not equipped nor trained to revise anything at this point.
Yep.
If I was. Most certainly, we could be taking sales and increasing people's assessment based on the sale alone. But I guess it's very complicated and I'm not at the point where I'm ready to jump into that yet. If we continue. In the next year and a half, two years, and we still don't have anybody fully in the seat. I toy with the idea of. Learning. More, learning more, so, but for now, we're limping along.
And on training and development, travel and meals, dues and membership, those all are pretty lean. And you're expecting to bring on new staff who may have training needs. Do you think that's adequate to both attract? Or maybe made a question for the manager, is that adequate to attract? A a new planner and then support their training needs?
It it's certainly not the level of training development we want, I mean, and I think that's, that would be across the board, I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the areas that. Every department took a hit on because. We're at the point where so many of the, the areas where we can. Work around are are the margins, and so this is one of those sort of non discretionary areas where we had to. Make judgments, and I think what, what I would say, my, my strategy would be is that if we do find a candidate. Who is, is a strong candidate for that position and required that training. Certainly, I would make sacrifices in my budget, and we would, I think, find the resources to to do that, I I don't think that would be an impediment to us. If we found the right person who needed it. So. But but I think for now, it's, it's really one of the few. But but I think for now, it's it's really one of the few areas we have the ability to try to meet some of the the targets based on the the race we're trying to get to.
Right. It's a great question because I've always said those line items have always been too lean. And to keep seeing them getting bid away at is 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 hard. Um giving it up now, hoping to gain it back in the future when I'm fully staffed. So I I some came out last year, so.
And on the grants, if the twelve thousand, uh you know, twelve thousand being taken out of the grants match uh with the expectation that ARP is going to be used, what does that look like for this department in the future than that, that there's a kind of a bigger gap to bridge? Uh once that money dries up is a, I guess that's a question for the future, really.
Yeah, it's it's, I mean, it, this is one of the things I hate to do, which is to build ourselves a new fiscal cliff that we do have to uh deal with in the future. I think one of the things um Dawn and I have talked about um doing is, you know, this, the way we we went through our budget process now is we look at a lot of prior year history, which is very good for helping us project and make um assumptions about FY twenty four. I think one of the things that we're gonna work to do is to create, you know, if we do this in twenty four, what does this mean in twenty five? What does this mean in twenty six? So that we can't be, because there are so many things that are cyclical. So this would be an area where ideally what we would do is in twenty six or twenty, you know, twenty six, start showing some increases um back into this line item because ARPA would disappear. Bill uh Bill Ahern's budget is a great example of this because some, he has cycles in terms of um, you know, some of the salt purchases and uh Clark's budget, it also a good example because of the election. So right now, we took a lot of savings in elections that next twenty five, we're not going to be able to take. So I think one of the things we'd like to do is get to the point where we can show the council. Hey, this is what it looks like in twenty four, just so you know. This is what it means in twenty five and twenty six, uh because you're absolutely right. We we have to, it's it's a temporary, it's a temporary Band-Aid uh that I would prefer not be a tool that we use, but we we were trying to, we were just trying to get to a target.
Yes. Yeah, it's hard to see it go from fifteen thousand down to twenty five hundred. Um I'm the only cost center that carries a line item for grant match. So um this is gonna cover my department only for anything in FY twenty four at this point. But as the manager said, I'm I'm gonna be right there, ready to pound it right back up to what we need and and potentially help other other um department heads if they need it. Um so there's a future. You're welcome.
It's good to hear that you plan on still being here to account for that. But just I I say this. Thank you. You're the best. I hope we can get you those positions filled as soon as humanly possible.
Fingers crossed, you know, in the next couple of months, I find a permanent administrator to to help out with just some of some of the duties, the the day-to-day duties really, really are burdensome in that I can't get to some other things and you can't just leave somebody hanging at the counter. Um zoning permit applications have a have a timeline. Um you can't leave an electrician or a contractor out to dry. Say, well, I'll get it to you in two weeks, you know, that's it's um. It's been difficult, so we'll get there. I I truly believe we'll get there. Um it's just gonna take a little bit more time.
I just crossed my mind and I don't know if you've already looked into it, but is there any way that we could like rely on like a deco or um Kelly, not Kelly Services. What what's the a another temporary agent?
West staff?
Yeah.
I I believe our HR manager, Rick, looked into that and um for whatever reason, I don't remember the reason, I apologize, um but it, that was not something that we could utilize.
Okay.
So so um people don't understand h- how technical um a zoning administrator, permanent administrators' work is and um sure, I could have someone answer the phones, but that still means taking a message and then handing it off. It's someone who's willing to invest the time and learn legal aspects of zoning.
Councilor.
Uh thank you. Um earlier Janet, you said um, you know, quote, we're limping along hardly. Um you know, we work very hard to attract businesses to Berry. I work very hard at it. And you know, we've permitted some new ones. And I can tell you that your attitude, your customer service, the way you treat people, it's second to none. Even coming in here tonight, your attitude, you're happy, you're smiling. I'm not happy today. The afternoon had a bunch of lawyers. You know, but you're always, you know, I just want you to know that.
Yeah.
How much I, how much I think we all appreciate your attitude and I know how difficult it is when you're down everybody um. But thank you because you have, y- you've just done the job and most importantly, I get it, I'm not blowing smoke up your ear. It it's what I get from the Forbans folks, from La Gente Construction, when people need answers. And what you just said, you can't leave people hanging, you don't leave people hanging. And I know that often, you know, when they go to you at four o'clock in the afternoon and they have an answer by nine o'clock the next morning, it's because he didn't grab dinner at six o'clock, maybe you grabbed dinner at eight o'clock, so. You know, just thank you so much because I can't do what I do. I'm at a point in my life where I love bringing businesses to Berry. I love working with young entrepreneurs. But I can't do what we're trying to do if if I don't have support in the city hall and you are that support, you and Carol, you're the two. Like, call Carol, call Janet. If you can't get an answer from them, there is no answer, so. But I, you know, I just want to say thank you very much because especially now this summer, you know, the construction projects are not going as smoothly as anybody would like. Um but an answer from your office always says, so thanks.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to to say with regards to um uh changes to the grand list and and accounting for sales and stuff like that, it's it it's not as simple as just plug a new value in based on the sale. Because um the grand list needs to reflect equitably the values across the city. And if you've got two houses next door to each other that are assessed at the same amount and one of them just sold for fifty thousand more than their assessment, that doesn't mean you can all of a sudden jump up their assessment. So there's a lot more to it and it's it it's actually a big part of what's going to happen starting next spring when we start the citywide reassessment, which is going to really level our playing field across the across the city, which will be great.
That's right. It's all about um assessment being fair and equitable and um we're gonna overcome some of the unfair and unequitable neighborhoods in the next couple of years. And I and I look forward to, you know, that finally getting done.
Janet, what are some of the things you're hoping to hand off to the junior planner, permit administrator? Are they mostly gonna be doing development review support? Um or will they be doing more like long-term comprehensive planning projects or special planning projects?
I foresee the latter. It's it's that person that is gonna be able to assist the planning commission. Um keep up with our regulations where I'm struggling to to keep up with that. Um. I hope some grant assistance, but primarily I I hope that junior planner um position can, you know, jump right in the hot seat or or work their way into that seat to 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 help with um the development review part of of development. It's um when does our zoning not work? Zoning is is a living, breathing document. Um we've all, we've recently been talking about um you know, changes for the cannabis, the planning commission's working on uh revisions for housing. It's a document that doesn't, you know, sit. It it needs to be addressed, needs to be reviewed constantly and and I hope that that person can take that on. Um and do a do justice to it at this point, for sure.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Also, I should add too that I really, I know I've asked you some very wonky questions about the bylaws, uh including one related to uh um uh a lot across the street from mine, so I really appreciate uh that the customer service you provided me personally, so.
I try.
Which I know you provide to everybody, so.
I haven't been very good about answering some of those emails. Um sometimes I I don't know the answer and I have to work very hard at finding the answer. Um it's it's all very dynamic and interesting for sure. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Yeah, thank you.
And have you considered cloning?
All right. Jeff is up. Buildings and Community Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I will start off by telling you that um at the very first budget congress, I did not endure myself to the city manager when I cut the city hall maintenance budget by about five thousand dollars and homies have to put up with the heat in his office. But we did, the the congress, I thought, went very well, was a little hesitant at first, you know, being all together at one time doing that. Um I thought it was an original idea. I thought it was a great chance to looked at everybody's budgets and take input from your fellow department heads. It was, it was an an excellent experience. So the facilities, BCS facilities department consists of myself. Um we have four maintenance positions right now. Um and actually, we're down to three. Uh one went out today for surgery. Um don't know when he'll be returning. We also have another physician that is basically staffing public safety maintenance and city hall maintenance. And we have one vacant maintenance position. Um the in-house posting for that position came down yesterday. So we will be looking externally for a filling in that position. We have one full-time cemetery maintenance person. Um in the summer months, we have up to eight part-time people. Um I know that this past year, we finally, we got back to eight. We'd only had about four the previous year and those four people back online really showed this year. Um we had a lot of compliments on all three cemeteries. Um I know last year, we got some poor feedback on especially St. Monica's and Elmwood because everything was focused on hope. Um but this year, it it went really well. Um we manage maintenance and upkeep of city hall, the civic center complex, public safety building. That includes cleaning, maintenance, repairs, HVAC, everything under the sun. Um over the years, the building maintenance line items for these buildings has typically been an easy target when budget cuts need to be made. Um and it shows that some of these buildings are are very old, this building, alumni hall, the auditorium. Um I think with this capital improvement plan that we've been working on goes into effect. Uh we can get some some major repairs done to these buildings and then you'll see that building maintenance number start to level off a little bit. It won't be spiking. I mean, we've there's been years where we've budgeted, say, thirty eight thousand and we spent sixty five, seventy. Um we maintain and landscape, seven parks, nine playgrounds, athletic fields and three cemeteries. I think a few years ago, I I came in and actually gave you a number, well, maybe it was a different council, how many acres we we mow or, you know, on a daily basis and I'll share that with you again sometime because it's it's a lot more than people think. Um we host community recreational athletic activities. Um I threw some numbers in there. There's basically fifteen annual events. These these are returning events at the auditorium. Um the BOR um the skating season actually started tonight and will run through the end of February. Um there's a number of one-day events at alumni hall as well as a weekly department of motor vehicle CDL testing. So every Wednesday, each month, they're there, they rent, they rent an office, they use the back lot and they conduct uh CDL testing. Um a few things I didn't list on here that we do. Um we are a Red Cross shelter. We're an emergency overflow hospital for Central Vermont Medical Center. We do Red Cross blood drives, Central Ramon Home Health Hospice Flu Clinics. And I'm sure as most of you know, back during the height of COVID, we were a testing and vaccination site for the Ramon Department of Health. The next slide. Um so these are our big hitters in our in our budget, uh city hall, public safety maintenance. The facilities includes odd parks and trees, BOR and the cemeteries. Um as it states here, nearly two-thirds of the cost increases are driven by projected fuel propane increases. Um beyond the fuel propane costs, nearly the remainder of the cost increases are driven by contractual personnel costs and seasonal staff increases. Um the full-time staff are all members of the United Steelworkers, which we are in negotiations with now. Um killing this vacant position we have is is gonna be difficult. Um the contract calls for certain levels where you bring someone in. These levels are nowhere near what private sectors are paying people right now. For example, uh cemetery health this past summer, typically, I was paying mowers fifteen bucks an hour. Uh weed whackers about twelve to thirteen. The only way I could get anybody, everybody made eighteen dollars an hour this year. And that's because they could walk in, people could walk in off the street into the granite sheds with no experience at all. They were starting them at between twenty-two to twenty-five dollars an hour. Um altogether, fuel, propane, personnel and seasonal staff account for ninety-nine point one percent of the budgeted cost increases. Um our savings achieved. Cemeteries, uh annual mower replacement. We're doing a much better job of maintaining our equipment now. Um we were looking at at some years, we had to purchase two and three mowers. Uh we've got it down to one a year now. Um parks and trees, a tree removal. We we have, we had a budget of, I think, ten thousand dollars for tree removal. We cut that back. Um we have the, what's called the shade tree fund, which takes care of the main street trees and other trees within the city. Um and that's got a little over twenty thousand dollars in it. So if we run into a situation where you gotta take down two or three trees, we can tap into that fund. And then we saved some water, pool water and sewer in the facilities department. Um not a very big presentation, um but I will say, um I'm I'm proud of the s- the staff that I have now. I think we've we've come a long ways. Um adding this this extra person will help immensely. So we'll get a posting out. Hopefully find somebody qualified. If you know anybody that wants to work for the city and likes working around buildings, grounds, um maintenance, send them our way. We'd love to have them.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Uh I'll ask one. So on the um the building, the city hall maintenance fund that's uh budgeted for was it sixty-seven this year? Or next, I know it was a, it's down down to tw- it was sixty-seven and twenty-one audited and now it's uh twenty or I'm sorry, I can't follow my line here, twenty thousand, right?
It's down to twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. And so that that covers things like the HVAC and it'll cover just anything that comes up that needs fixing.
That'll just be regular repairs. There's still, we still have some code issues to deal with, but we still have money from the one point seven million dollar bond that is earmarked for code violations.
Okay.
And that's what the majority of these are, these items to be done are under that, so we can cover them with that bond money.
And that includes like code violations, like the bathrooms not being eighty-eight accessible and things, okay?
Sprinklers, um smoke detectors, uh fire alarm panel.
Thank you. Any questions?
Now you're gonna hate me for this one. So um trash is in the parks. Is that something that we can kinda? Get back?
Trash.
Trash cans in the parks. I know that, um, we've developed over the years of, uh, kind of carry-in, carry-out policy. But I I noticed a lot of times in the parks that I visit in our community. Um, people don't carry out hardly anything, um, but they carry in a lot. Um, and when I talk to people at parks, one of the biggest concerns that they have. That there's no place for them to put stuff and kind of that that burden essentially, um. And so I was just kind of curious if that was something that we might be able to address. I know it's not. I I don't know, just.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll we'll take another look at it. Um, what precipitated that was. Just right here in City Hall Park. You know, you'd empty them on a Monday morning and Tuesday morning they're filled again with household garbage. People don't wanna pay Casella or Myers to come and pick up their trash. It's easier to drive down at night and and stuff them in a city, city barrel or dumpster. We. We never used to lock the dumpsters up on the hill.
Sure.
We we lock them all the time now. They come in on a Monday and they're overflowing. You know, I I don't, I don't think there's a real easy answer to it, Michael. Um, well, you know, we can certainly look at it again. The other thing is when recycling went into effect. For every trash can we put out now, we have to put a recycling can next to it. So there'd be an increase in cost for that. Certainly, we could certainly look at it.
I appreciate your time for sure. I really do, Jeff. You know that.
I know you do. Yeah. Thank you. That it?
Just waiting for it. So whatever happened to my zero, no, um.
That one still runs like a charm.
You're gonna turn?
No, i- interestingly, when, uh, Karen bought me a new zero-turn mower. And I felt so badly for the city that I sold them my used one at a hugely discounted price. And it's still going. I drive by Elmwood and.
Yeah.
Give him the thumbs up. Um, are we using? And it's really, it's a serious question along those lines because we had the question. Many years ago, when we didn't have zero turns, we had all these John Deere tractors that are great machines. For a specific purpose, not really for mowing. And we had a conversation about efficiency and how zero-turn mowers are just more efficient. They're faster. And when you're mowing as many acres as you're mowing, so have we kind of made that? Transition to all zero turns and how's that working?
Still have two, two basic lawn tractors, two simplicities, um. And that's basically for St. Monica's and Elmwood. Um, it's just. Those cemeteries of the monuments are a lot closer together. You don't get the efficiency with a zero turn when you're moving around in between the monuments. Uh, but we do use a zero turn at Elmwood on the front lawns, um, and. If one of the typical riders goes downhill, he'll mow between stones with with yours because yours is a smaller base than. The sixty-two which we have. But, uh, we we're basically, um, we only have two riders and we have one, two, three. Four, five, six, seven zero turns now.
So are we looking in equipment purchases? Are 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 we looking for those efficiencies? I mean, you know, labor costs are going up, fuel prices are going up. Uh, you know, that all affects your budget. It all affects your efficiency. So are we? When you look at equipment, are you looking at equipment that will make? Your, your, you know, your employees more, our employees more efficient?
Yes. In fact, uh, I've been having the discussions about. Maybe our next purchase may be a, an electric or battery operated mower. I mean, I've been hearing, I've been hearing good things, um, and I know at some time. If I don't do it on my own, I'm probably gonna be pushed into doing it. And so I, you know, I'm gonna start researching those. Um, but yeah, we do look at, we look at, you know, what you can. What you can mow easier with, what's, what's better for the operators, um. Riding on one of them simplicities is not the most comfortable thing in the world. Um, zero turns are that are seating. Uh, just, you know, the fact that you can just spin it around and head the other way where with a tractor. Drive in, back up, turn around and head the other way. Um, yeah. You will hold on to those two simplicities until they die, but. The majority of this, the majority of the equipment's gonna be high-efficient zero-turn mowers.
Thank you.
And thank you for that scag. Thank you.
It's, I just found the line that I was seeing that there's fifty-one thousand under new maintenance and then twenty thousand under. Improvements and repairs. So what's the distinction between those two lines? But. That's, uh. It's seventy-one thousand and. Special maintenance, it seems like a threshold that would cross over into capital, capital budget. So fifty, fifty-one thousand.
That's the position.
Oh, that's a position. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Stephanie, welcome.
Hi, welcome. Nice to see you. So, my department is, um, Buildings and Community Services. We're like an umbrella and Recreation is a section that's underneath it. I am, my title is the Assistant Director. So I, um, an assistant to Jeff, uh, Recreation is, you know, where my degree is and, you know, where a lot of my. Um, specialty in the park that I I very much love. Um, so we'll jump right into, um, the Recreation Budget here. Um, so, under the Recreation category, um, there's the one full-time employee, which is is myself. And then we have, um. At the ice rink, I have like, um, some skate guards and cashiers. And then there's pool personnel, um, the director, assistant director. Um, cashiers and lifeguards. And so my budget categories have like personnel for me, Fika and all that. And then. Um, for those two categories, pool and, um, the rink is like three thousand, not looking at the number, but like three thousand. Next slide, please. I'd like Janet. So, a lot of, um, ju- just a slight increase, but it's basically, um. You know, wages, healthcare, um, pensions, we really went through, um. I have been extremely fortunate the last couple of years with grants. The last two summers, I was able to land a grant that. Um, I'll speak to the last summer at, it covered all the, um, pool personnel salary for the summer. And allowed us to offer season passes at a fifty percent reduction in the camps, um. At a seventy-five percent reduction. And so those were like two wonderful grants and then another little one before that. I also had another grant that, um, has assisted me to purchase, um, mannequins. Um, diving bricks, um, pool equipment so that we can. Do our best to try to eliminate this lifeguard shortage. You know, what can we do so that we can? Um, get the training right at our, at our own pool and, you know, train. You know, I'm interested in training people at our pool, but I'm interested in Central Vermont, you know, as a whole to train. Um, it also has now given me things to expand, um, programs. Like a water aerobics, I, the grant helped me to get some equipment. So when I offer the program, you don't have to worry if you have the equipment, you sign up. Um, next slide, please. And you know, your basic dues, membership fees. Um, I'm very active in the Vermont Recreation Parks Association. Um, I think I've held all the offices that you can hold, so I'm kind of like more on that. I think they wonder what I'm doing right now, but I've I've been to all those. And, you know, I keep up with the NRPA because that's where a lot of grants come through, so that is a, is helpful. And then, um, I'm still, I stay certified, I'm a, um, lifeguard certified. Um, first aid and all of that, and I'm a water safety instructor certified so that. Um, you know, we're shorthanded or it's really busy, you'll see me hopping up there on on the lifeguard chair. Um, but you'll see me even happier when, you know, swimming lessons, I'm teaching swimming lessons, I'm like very happy. Um, so. Um, that's kind of like, there's just a small amount dues, memberships and fees, but I get a lot from that. Um, next. And training and development, um, there's, you know, like, not a, not a lot of funding there, but, um, I am nationally certified, so. I keep up with my continuing ed credits. Um, it's for every two years, I just, um, recertified in September. And lifeguard training, water safety instructor, um, I, I just did both of those in the last, um, little bit. I gotta take the test, so I don't really like to do that so much, but, um, and then, um, with training, I go to all the, um. Rec Association quarterly trainings. I'm really big on training and I'm just lucky with our association a lot for very low cost, so. So, rec supplies, um, the rec supply categories, you know, covers things like, um, the arts and crafts, the the basketballs. Oh, I I just bought some paddle ball, um, nets and, um, you know, balls. Um, just that basic like items that you need to put on like breakfast with Santa, you know, it'll help me pay for, um, some of the goodies that Santa will help give out. Rec programs that, um, we had a reduction in the budget. Um, because there was a recreation fund balance that I'll be able to use to help pay for instructors. And so there's like, you could see, you know, the camps, um, I I do have to say that the egg hunt, um. Is a more pricey event, but, um, somebody helped me to realize that, you know, when you, when you have like. You know, between five and seven hundred kids there, you divide that up by what you paid, you know, you're looking at like. Two, three dollars a child and it's like, it's a good deal. And we, you know, typically get up to a thousand people in the park. So, and then, um, those are some pictures of the camps that we had this summer.
So just to be clear, even with that five hundred dollar reduction, you're still good to do the egg hunt?
Yeah.
Okay.
I tried it well. I'm used to working with not a lot and try to have a program pay for itself, so keep the price reasonable, but balance it out, so. That's what I'll continue to try. Um, and again, I jumped ahead on the pool a little bit just to talk about some of the equipment, but the grant. Um, last summer was the, I think, the best summer of my entire career at the pool. It started out very slowly because I was, you know, we didn't have enough personnel that, that was a little bit, um. Tricky to try to figure out, but we, we worked through that, um, and the grant had paid for the pool noodles that you'll see there. Several life jackets, um, the connect four game. Um, all these items that you come to the pool and it's not just like, okay, there's a pool. And for those of you who grew up here, okay, so no diving board, no tower, you know, we took away all the fun there was. But now, you know, but you come there and the kids can have a good time. They have diving toys, that was in the grant too. Um, they're pretty lenient, you know, I let the football happen for a while till, you know, me and Stephanie has to take the. Football out because it was, you know, getting a little bit rough, but, um. The best part is that the charts show that we are reaching more Berry City residents. And that was the most important to me. Um, last year, it was. Pretty close to fifty-fifty between like town and outside and city. Um, but we're reaching, you know, more city residents and, um, we did open up. Um, once for homecoming in the afternoon at no charge, and then there was one very hot day. And we let, let folks come and what that did is not only had a place for people to come. Um, but you introduced to like, that's a destination park up there, so they got to see the pool, they hadn't been to the pool, but yet. You know, the playground, the tennis courts and all of that, so, um, it. I I really think that, I know there were pros and cons about whether or not to do that pool over. But I really think that we reached a lot of people. Um, I also purchased a wheelchair with the grant. And that was used this summer and that totally melted my heart to see that. Um, there were a lot of, um, grandparents who would in the past sit down and like watch the children. Now they're in the water with them. And those are kind of the goals that you wanna see. You wanna see it more inclusive. I think I have a lot more to learn about how to make it even more inclusive, um, you know, but we're getting there. Um, I need to learn a little bit more how to expand the swimming lessons, you know, in that area, but it all takes. You know, I just have to learn a little bit more, um. And so, you know, basically we went through and, you know, we had. Two good solid days and, you know, everyone went, really went through their budget and, um. You know, I think that I'll, I'll, I'll make it, you know, with that reduction, um, with the programs, we'll make it work. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Stephanie.
I don't have a question. Um, I just wanna say that, you know, uh. The entire city staff does a lot with a little, but very, uh, few of. The programs, the operations that the city have, um. Directly impact people's lives in an incredibly tangible way. You know, like all the work that Jeff and Janet do, they impact people's lives. All the time. Tom was talking about, the counselor Lozong was talking about that earlier. Uh, but you, you know, you you create summer memories, you create community and you do it with so little and you do such a great job of bringing in outside funding. Um, and just making it work for. Mostly for the kids in Barry. Um, and that's just incredibly important thing for children who, uh. For children who have unsteady home lives, uh, for children who are growing up. In circumstances in which they don't get as many opportunities as other children do. Uh, you make sure that at least whenever any kid comes to one of your programs, um, that they have just as much of. Uh, of access to those programs as anybody else in Barry. And that's just incredibly valuable and incredibly important. And I know you know that. Um, but I just wanted to say that out loud and say thank you.
So we do. Any, any other questions?
Well, he said.
Thank you very much.
Just a compliment for you about, you know, everything that you do. I know you and I have a lot of interactions, I mean, all the time. Um, but you're always amazing and and the things that you were bringing to our community, like Counselor Waz, as I could said. Are just priceless. The Easter egg hunt, um, that that both the mayor and I were able to go to. Um, and and help participate and set up, um, and just all of the smiling faces. Uh, and and are the reason that we do these things. And it just, your entire presentation just kept a smile on my face. Knowing that the the things and the memories that we are bringing to these children and these families and people in our communities. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, one just quick thing is, okay, in maybe two weeks, I've been here thirty-five years, and I think one of the greatest. Things at the egg hunt for me is to watch the parents who were children now bringing their children. And I'm actually seeing that at the pool too, and that, that to me is, you know, worth a million dollars right there. Um, so. I guess I have a, a more.
You can say it. He wants the football back.
Yeah. Was his kid, I don't know. I don't discriminate. I have to do, you know, like, safety first.
Before you go, Stephanie, I mean, you're at the top of your career. You've held every position there is to hold. At the, uh, Vermont Parks and Recreation Association. You run an outstanding program on a shoestring budget, probably one of the best values in the city of Vermont. What, what do you hope? For the future, uh, I mean, in the next ten years for the Recreation Department. I know it's really been running a shoestring, so.
Million-dollar budget.
Might have that tomorrow, wait, it says Tuesday, Thursday morning, I might be able to tell you a lot. Why, you know why, think about it. You know why.
Oh, yeah.
Happy donation Thursday morning. Tom, I might need your help with accounting on it, but, um. You know, I I do wanna see, you know, like more, um, you know, the intergenerational. I just think that's important because the demographics that I'm seeing, I'm seeing a lot of like the toddlers. But, you know, older folks too, and I think there needs to be a way to, um, bring, you know, bring them. Together a little bit more, um, and get more people back into some of the resources like, um. I've just gotta get someone to help me lay down a pickleball court in the odd. But we'll be bringing people in there daily who might not have been in there. They only come in there to vote. But now, you know, to bring people back that way, and I'm already seeing it in the pool. But we have more than just pool. We have, you know, like the the pass, you know, transportation pass now with like e-bikes, you're gonna, you're seeing more. Um, I can't wait to get an e-bike, more people who, um, you know, are using e-bikes, so we're working on, you know. You know, where can they go with those, um. I'm not really, I haven't been too involved with the river access, but I think that, you know, if anything like that comes about, that's. I'm not really, I haven't been too involved with the river access, but I think that, you know, if anything like that comes about, that's just, you know, one more avenue. So what I see for ten years is just trying to pull all the community members. Okay, so we create community through people parks and programs and that's what we try to do, just like, you know, what was downtown yesterday. So that's what I hope for ten years. I hope I'm still alive. Yeah, so we have some picnic tables, but that's, you know, like another thought. If we don't have funding to put up like a shelter type, what we would have funding to do is, you know. Okay, I'm kind of old school, drill the hole exact right in the picnic table and, you know, put that nice, you know, eight foot umbrella right there. Because again, I'm seeing that too because there's very few places for shade, but thank you for coming to the pool this summer.
I love water, I grew up going to the pool, riding my bike down.
So, so that's why you keep doing what you're doing, you know, something like that, so.
So the real question is though, did you call using collect?
In college, you had a.
Well, now I'm picturing like a tourist attraction of Vermont's last payphone. Use the money to pay for more season passes.
No, it's not there, but it because they started charging us to have it there, so then we got a nice budget, a council gave us a phone.
Well, thanks, that takes us to our I don't see under new business, which is the related to a governance committee. I was looking at the timelines for just to introduce this item for the city charter. And those those clocks are coming pretty quickly. And I know in the past we've developed council working groups. But I thought, based on conversations with manager Strela Castro and clerk does. That it it would be worthwhile to set up a standing governance committee to look at charter issues. This is something a lot of communities have around the state, it brings more process to the amendment to the most important. Governing document we have, it's higher than ordinance, it has to go to the general assembly, has to go to the voters. And and a lot of these committees and other communities develop really good reports. Based on charges that the legislative body like councils and select boards put before them. And so this proposal would envision a seven member body to. Prepare recommendations for councils consideration for both the March town meeting, town meeting and the November town meeting. And so with that, any questions?
Seems to be a lot more than just a committee, you know, to study appointing the clerk, that's. It'd be a hard no on that.
Well, actually, what I had brought up a while ago was whether the city would wanted to just discuss and explore the options. Around separating clerk and treasurer and whether an appointed treasurer is something. That on Barry Town did it, other communities have done it. Now that we have a really robust finance department. Whether there's, I mean, there's pros and cons, so it it might be something to talk about. But no, your your clerk position must remain independently elected.
Yeah, I would think, and then, you know, I'm not sure. Planning Commission DRB members, you know, if you're not a resident of the city, you can't be on the planning commissioner DRB. Was there an issue somewhere that?
So that was true that it up until just this legislative session, the DRB members and planning commissioners under general law could only be residents. That just changed this year, and so this would restore what was the case prior to. This legislative session, I think it was, S one eighty one, I can't remember. So it was to restore what what we had before. And and I think it's from from my my, well, I think we could have different views on whether or not that's a pro or con. The idea with this committee, same thing with clerk, appointing clerk treasurer, I also lean to an elected clerk. This would be an idea to evaluate the pros and cons and to come back with some recommendations for council to consider. Before packaging something for the voters and in language that's really been vetted and had a lot of discussion behind it.
No, no, there's just, i- i- it's more, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to. Forming a committee, it's all of the stuff that we're pushing that, you know, you know, I've had. Three days to think about it, and there's just a lot of information here that, you know, it's it's a resolution. It's not even a vote of the council, it's a resolution, hey, we are pushing, you know, we want you to look at all these things. And if you're, we're not looking at it until November, maybe we could pump the brakes a little bit. You know, take the November stuff out and maybe think about it later on. And when I say later on, I don't mean six months from now, I mean, you know, maybe three weeks from now, so that we're not. Throw, you know, I'd just like to have a discussion at the at the council level first before we shoot this stuff to a committee.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, I'm largely supportive of this, I think that. The entire city at this point can probably agree that our last charter change process didn't go as we all would like it to. So I think that there is definitely a lot of merit to. To having a more formal committee, a more formal process, and like the mayor said, you know, this is a. Going out on a limb here, there are plenty of charter committees throughout the state. But I do agree with councillor Lozon's point of this, of the long list under the the third or fourth or now fifth resolved. You know, I think that. The committee once formed can have conversations amongst themselves of what they view as the priorities, you know, of the council. Like so some of this stuff on here, the clarification of section six oh one B, yeah, that's probably something we could get done. In one night, throw it to the voters seems more of a formality as opposed to an appointed versus elected clerk or treasurer. Which seems to be a bigger question that we would want to take longer to accomplish. So my first question is whether the both the city manager and the clerk are in favor of. Forget the substance for a second of what's written, but the concept of a charter committee as opposed to the, you know, frankly, Carol's. That she's always commandeered as we're heading up to election season. In the past, that's sort of how these things have happened is Carol and one or two councillors as to not break the warum. Have talked amongst themselves about charter change recommendations and brought that back to the council. And while I think that for some of the small technical changes that we've seen when we got rid of the city plumber, for example. That has worked perfectly fine, but having larger conversations about, you know, the the non-residents on public bodies. The elected versus appointed clerk and treasurer separating the two, you know, I I can see how that would. Require a longer conversation, more study, more people who know answers to those very complicated questions. So, yeah.
Yeah, I I. The the concept, the composition of the body I was supportive of, I I think I defer obviously the content of what this committee looks to 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 the council. I mean, I think one thing to caution right is is. For example, you know, does the, does a body sort of preempt the council from taking an action? The council may be leaning towards like that's something for you all to decide, right? So just to just pick in one, the the representation of committees, right? Like a a body could come back, a committee could come back and say, there is no challenge with it. And maybe that's not a direction the council chooses to take, so then you're going to get, so that's just, that's just something for you all to determine. But so I'm not waiting on the content of the the matter, but the composition is is I was consulted on, I'm I'm comfortable with it, yeah.
And and just to to give you a a little history, we did have a citizen charter review committee. Ten, twelve years ago, we worked on a significant, I mean. Page by page, section by section review of the charter and came up with quite a substantial. Charter for the voters and got voted down. Part of the reason that it gets vote, that it got voted down is that if you're doing substantial changes. That are voluminous, you that are too long to print them all on the ballot. You have to do them as one yes, no question, the entire thing. And that becomes a really hard sell. You have to then print copies of the charter change, you have to, you know, public shit, you have to send it out with absentee ballots. You have to post it in the voting booths, you have to, and and the, you know, if there's one small section that voters are uncomfortable with. Then the whole thing goes down. And so since then, it it's been more of our practice to, you know, pick. Three or four things that that are that are something, topics that are that are under discussion. So that we can put them as individual items on the ballot. And I'm not saying that you can't do something more substantial and more holistic. But I just want to let everybody know that's what the process is for doing larger sort of bulk changes. Some of the items that are that are proposed on the resolution, I I think are worth exploring, some of them don't. If I were on the committee, I don't think they're they're, they rise to the level of needing exploring at this stage of the game, but but that's personal opinion, so.
Yeah, so I'm actually against this and I think we've done a pretty damn good job at, excuse my language. At at doing our charter changes since I've been on city council. You know, I I look at this resolution and I'm I'm a little annoyed by it, I'm not going to lie. Clarification of section six oh one B, ability for a city council to appoint multiple city attorneys. Based on respective areas of expertise. It extent and impact of overrepresentation of non-residents serving on city pu- public bodies. Which I think that's a reference to Bob Nelson, who is on our, well, I'm just saying that this right here, this list. Well, that's fine, I'm I'm just letting you know that this list is a, I'm the mayor and I want this stuff to happen. And and that's what it looks like to me, and if in and it looks like a committee that's being set up, that one is going to burden staff already. And it's just, I I'm a complete no on this. And it it frustrates me because it feels like, it feels like this is a a process. Where we're going to end up having the mayor and one other councillor on here and it's going to be driving the conversations. That are not, that are not here at city council level, which is our job to deal with the charter and to deal with those questions. If we don't want somebody on the council or on the on a position that is from another municipality, then we don't appoint them. We already have that in there and I it just, this whole thing is just no.
How do you really feel?
I'm very unhappy about this.
Look, I councillor, I've got my reservations as well. You know, one thing I would like to make clear is that discretion rests here with the council. That if we do not want to send anything to a committee, if we want to look at a traffic issue ourselves and we don't want to send it to the traffic committee. That is certainly within our purview and I hope, I I think everybody understands that. That the committees are there and we appreciate the service of the members, but they're there to assist the council. And if the council feels that they want to keep the discussion here. In the council chambers, then we certainly have discretion to do that, you know, six oh one B, I mean, I think that's. One of the issues I was actually going to bring that before the council in a couple of weeks and try to clean up that language. Because I personally, I think we're in violation of the charter right now, and I think that is something that needs to be cleaned up. You know, so as long as we understand that. Some issues remain with the council, I'm okay, I'll try it.
So, Stuckwell. I see it as an opportunity to have a group that could do a little more depth and do a little study and inform the council. With some background information and some recommendations, which as councillor Lozon was pointing out, we can take or not. We can say this doesn't agree with us, but it seems to me it would be potentially quite useful to have people who. Stand a committee that can methodically go through these issues and do some background research.
So I guess, one of my biggest concerns in in kind of reading over this document. Seems to be a lot of the things or more things that you, Mr. Mayor, brought up personally. With attorney, I don't know, some other things, I support a lot of the stuff that's in this document. But as a whole, I really don't support it. I honestly feel that I it's just, there's some things in here that are quite inappropriate. Like the extent and impact of overrepresentation by non-residents serving on city public bodies. I think that it's important to have representation and who's to state what an overrepresentation is. At that point, it would be the mayor, who would be the de facto in this particular resolution. And a council lays on and then community or seven members. I'm not okay with supporting this as written.
I would say you could, there there's opportunities to both split the questions of, is it, you know, is it good? Is it, is there merit in having committee? And then also, what are the areas of inquiry? Some of these areas of inquiry, I put on this list, not because I feel strongly about them, but because other people have mentioned them. We have committees where we have only one city resident, for instance, on board, sometimes that are driving cost centers. Where the city ends up paying the bill and it's mostly. Some of that can be largely influenced by out of town residents, that's an area of inquiry that something like this could look in. For instance, you know, I, well, there are the other elements that I on this list that I don't feel that strongly about, but have been mentioned to me. As areas of the charter that could could get a look at, and it's not saying that there should be a particular outcome. It's saying that they should, people should look at these questions, take the time to look at what's in the charter, what are alternatives, options? What's potential language and and then bring it back to the council to make a decision. So that there's a question by question, do you want to do this, do you want to do this, do you want to do this? And and we've, we have established committees to look at. Broad areas of inquiry and this wouldn't be unusual to do like, as Carol said. For both the city or for other communities to have a charter committee to look at these questions and make sure they're well vetted before they come back to council. Because some of these can be very thorny legal questions that take hours to kind of understand. What's what's the current language means, what are the, what are different options, what's legally sound and how can you structure your city government? So, so it's not just my list, councillor was.
Yeah, so the fact, you just touched on Mr. Mayor, a couple of things I was going to say, the first being that in. In I, first of all, I want to say I was not involved in the drafting of this at all, I saw it for the first time when the rest of council did. But there are things on here which I have mentioned to the mayor in the past or other people. Just when I'm talking about the city government, because as a councillor, I get a lot of questions about it. So I think that another thing that's important to remember is that the mayor is the only member of this body besides our esteemed clerk and treasurer. That is elected by the citywide as opposed to ward by ward. And I believe personally that that enables the mayor to set forward a vision of what they believe. That the the city should head in, whether that be ordinance, charter, policy or budget. So my point is, I believe the mayor. And even if this was a a a list of things that the mayor wanted to accomplish. You know, well, frankly, that's the mayor's prerogative and there are six other councillors on this dais. So that if we think that the mayor is wrong about something, we can push back. so that if we think that the mayor is wrong about something, we can push back and outvote the mayor. Uh, and I'm sure that that's what this council would do if a charter change came back from this committee. Um, eh, as councillor Lozong pointed out earlier, just like with every other one of our city committees, uh, with rare exception, th- they are not final decision makers, the council is, and that remains true, even if the committee sent back a report that uh asked the council to do all of these things. We're under no obligation to do that, but it may allow for, as councillor Stockwell mentioned, some of these much more uh, complicated legal questions or complicated policy decisions to be more vetted by um, to be vetted longer by a broader body than just the council, and you know, I was, eh, I'm also not uh thrilled about the idea of um, you know, a volunteer committee with, whose members could have any kind of expertise uh, weighing in on what should or should not be the charter. But sometimes it's really good to have an outside pair of eyes looking at things, and I know that I, as a councillor, when we're talking about whether it's charter policy or ordinance, um, I get very in the weeds very quickly. I remember, well, we made this decision three years ago because of this conversation that happened in this data point that we had at the time, and things changed. Um, so I think that it's important that the council retain that authority as the final decision maker, uh, and I think that there's nothing in this resolution that would prevent that. So I would like to amend uh the resolution to strike all of the bullet points um in the fifth and sixth. Be it further resolved, get rid of all those bullet points and have the first be it further resolved read, the committee will prepare a report for the twenty twenty, March twenty twenty-three town meeting, including recommended date, language, or preferred alternatives period. And have the second be it further resolved, read the same thing only November twenty twenty-three. So what I am saying is, remove all the specifics and just ask this committee to come back with a recommendation for March of twenty twenty-three and November of twenty twenty-three, and I think that that's something that could easily uh continue, just we know moving forward that before March and before November elections, we're going to get a report at some point every year about what this uh committee may do. Uh, so that is my motion. And we have a couple hands.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'm gonna second it for the point of discussion and to be just polite generally, cuz that's who I am.
Second, uh, councillor Booton.
Yeah, so I would love to see on here for um shall appoint residents and registered voters. I I think that you know, one of the problems that we have with our our committees is that we have multiple people serving on multiple committees, and it's it, you know, it's one of those, those are appointed positions, and you know, if people want to have that that much say, maybe they should run for city council. Um, and and I'm wondering if maybe we should add that in there, as if you're already on a committee, you shouldn't be part of this committee. I know that's gonna, not gonna fly with everybody, probably no one, but that's okay.
Well, as the mover, I would just say that I'm not, I will, I won't accept that as a friendly amendment because um.
I have, I I understand.
Decided at the end.
I, I get it, I get that.
Councillor Shabbat.
I guess I'm two minds with this, because it seems like a lot to ingest really quickly. When you say councillor Wasak to take out all of the bullet points, so that there's nothing there, then it it seems like a really vague mission for folks to prepare a report. It it's like they have nothing, nothing to take aim at, you know, and and with other committees, for example, like with the Equity Committee, they had a formal charge, they had, and it was, and it was a I don't know if doable is the word, but it was narrow enough that they didn't have a lot of different things to address. And as I look at this list, you know, if the bullets were to stay there, then it reminds me of some of the lists that I saw when I first came on the council that seemed like an awful lot to accomplish in one year or in one six-month period.
Yep.
And, you know, likewise, if there's nothing on there, then it's like a shot in the dark. And if we're going to go with this idea, I'd really like to see that we have some priorities that are in there that we wanna have looked at. Because it it seems like a really formidable list as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
So I think that I have heard from other councillors that uh there may be a path forward here, um, but it's a lot to take in at once, and we might wanna make some edits. Um, so I'd be prepared to withdraw my motion, um, and either make a motion to table or um ask that we not end discussion, but understand we're not going to make a decision tonight, give folks a couple of weeks to look over it, come back to it at the November twenty-ninth council meeting, cuz we don't wanna do it on the fifteenth, cuz that's the ARPA thing, so that we kick it to the twenty-ninth.
Uh, I think with this couple.
Um, so I see commentary from the public, uh, is it William or Sharon Tover?
It's William. Uh, I was just loo- looking at the the thing about having a committee to study charters, and I would ki- I believe that we've elected the city council to make decisions like this, and I wouldn't be as comfortable with having something like charter changes being vetted by another committee. On the other hand, if you, any councillor wants to get input from the public, from members of the public about a possible charter change, there's nothing to prevent you from asking members of the public. Um, you know, it it, certain things, if you wanted to make a charter change, uh, you know, there there might be things where I would have expertise, I can't think that that there would be, but there are other members of the public who would have expertise, and I think the thing to do is, as councillors, you find those people and just do it yourselves. Thank you.
And we also.
Is it Dave Delcor?
Yeah, I was just gonna point out, uh, there is no November election next year, so this would be the only thing on the ballot, and based on the list, um, it it seems like those kinda questions, if it, they were the only questions that were being asked, you'd get like fifty people voting on it, I just wanted to point that out.
Yep.
Thank you, Dave, that ends that.
If you were, if you were going to hold a special election in um, November, it wouldn't be taken up until the next legislative session anyway, and you might as well put all the questions on the March ballot.
All right.
That following March ballot, which would then be taken up at the same legislative session. And you'd get more participation.
Uh, councillor Stockwell.
Think of councillor.
Oh, councillor Lozong, yeah.
Was I?
You think so.
Uh, I'd like to see the clerk uh on the committee, I realize that there could be a potential conflict. Well, you know, Carol, my biggest concern about this, I'll be straight up, is that it's gonna get all political. You know, and it sh- and it shouldn't, and it can't.
Right.
And I've always, eh eh, you know, since I've been associated with the city, first with Gene Stratton, and then with you, I always had a, always had a clerk that I could look up to as someone who was apolitical and was going to do the right thing, no matter who he or she upset. They, they were gonna let us know, so I I'd be adamant about having the clerk on on the committee, uh, a- and as I said, I'm I'm counting that, I'm counting on this not becoming political and not becoming an us against them. I see, I I don't think this committee's gonna get a whole lot done. So, all right, let's say we vote tonight, we're gonna do the committee. All right, thirty days to apply, fair enough, you know? So we give people thirty days to apply, that puts us on December. Now the council is in the middle of budget season, and we've got to interview, I don't know, maybe six apply, maybe sixty apply. Now we've got, I, so my biggest concern, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it for March, because Carol, we gotta have these warned by.
We would have to warn the first public hearing by the end of December, um, but you don't have to have um, language until that public hearing, so that means you have language around the end of January. Um, but still, it would be a relatively quick turnaround, uh, unless you targeted two or three specific areas.
You know, and even removing the gender, e- e- even remove, removing gender, you know, making the language gender neutral. As Carol pointed out, I felt really bad cuz she, Carol got crushed. When, when she did that, we had so many, we were cleaning up the charter, there was nothing wild about it, it was all mundane stuff, a lot of it was grammatical. And Carol put so much work into it, and because it was just so damn long, people said, they didn't, they just didn't wanna read it, and they said, I'm voting no, cuz I don't trust them.
The nice thing about the um, making pronouns gender neutral is that we don't have to do it.
Right.
The legislature, ledge council actually has it as one of their directives, that any charter language that comes before them, they automatically make it gender neutral. So um, anything that we, we don't have to spend a lot of time and energy on advertising and putting things on the the ballot or anything like that, any section we put forward um, that includes uh pronouns will be neutralized um, by the, by ledge council um at the State House. It it's, it's not holistic, they're not gonna do the whole charter um without us presenting it as a, as a charter change, but certainly every section we put forward, they will be making those changes over time.
So, you know, I I would be comfortable, I I, with apologies, mayor, I'd I'd gut your resolution, I'd have one paragraph saying, okay, we're going to establish a committee with uh, I think there were a total of seven members. So there would be the clerk, the mayor, and five other members, uh, five other citizens at large, and um, let's see who applies and what it looks like, and if it looks like it's just gonna be one big political thing, I'm not voting for it and not voting for any appointments, so.
So I, I won't take that as a friendly amendment, but I will withdraw my motion, so that if you felt like making.
Yeah, so I'm fine with doing that if everyone else is just, literally, I I don't know that we do it in resolution form, but I don't think we need to re-warn it, because it's been, i- i- it's on the agenda. But, you know, again, I don't even know, what if no one is interested in serving? What if only people from Barry Town are interested in serving? Wouldn't that be something?
So councillor Stockwell, there's a.
I do think that the residents, that having residency in various cities should be an important component, certainly a majority of most, if not all committees. But the other thing I would say is that maybe it should just be limited to review of ordinances and charter, so that it's both broader and simpler.
So councillor Lozong, you have a motion to?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna just move to to establish the committee, and we'll learn the rest. We may not give them any charge eh, before January, we may not have time. So the council can, we can establish the committee, we can advertise the committee, see if anyone is interested, and that will give, I mean, we're forty-five days away from seating this committee under the best of circumstances. So that will give us time to figure out what the charge of the committee is, something we all agree on, and what their initial tasks uh as assigned by the council are going to be.
So to establish a committee with five members, the clerk and our, seven members, clerk and the mayor, and uh, and then to uh follow the appointments policy to 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 get it established with no residency requirement, even though they can't vote.
Well, it's the only policy we have. I mean, we have to follow, even if we pass this resolution, you still gotta fi- I mean, so now we're not following our own policies, so yeah, exactly. We'll figure it out as we go, we'll be okay.
So under, under, just uh, under discussion there, we, so we have this appointments policy, we say, we're gonna only set these up by resolution, we say we're gonna set, we're gonna be clear, because we, the reason we had that policy is cuz it was getting pretty noisy and political about how we were setting up uh boards, committees, and commissions, the idea is that council would only do this if we had a clear charge, we had a clear composition, we had clear terms, um, and the, and that the appointment process was uh, um, was was established. Uh, I mean, that gave the people equal opportunity to get it get on board, and uh, and so right now you wanna get the committee set up, loop back to a future council discussion where we talk about what the charge of the committee's gonna be?
Yes. Eh, tha- that's what I'd prefer to do, because that way, well, we'll, we'll give people a head start on expressing interest, I mean, I think people will get the gist of what it's all about.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I don't think this is ready for prime time in general. I mean, we've had three days to look at it, and you know, I, I would agree with councillor Wasak with tabling it for now.
Uh, so there's no, uh, so table the new motion, um.
I would, I would make it, yeah, that's fine, oh.
I'd agree with you, this, this, uh, I don't think there's enough consensus around this item to move forward, and uh, we're.
Withdrawn.
Committee reset.
Withdrawn.
Yours is withdrawn.
Motion to table.
Second.
So it's already withdrawn, so there's no.
Yeah, motion to table.
There's no, you can't table.
You can, no, but you can table a discussion on an issue. Second.
There's a motion, uh, can you table a discussion?
No, you can act, you can only table.
Yeah, you can uh move to.
I know that answer, you can table a motion only.
Okay.
And it is, and there's no debate on if you, if you make a motion, if you make a motion to table, a motion that has been made and seconded, there is no debate, you have to vote the motion to table immediately, and then it sits around until someone says, take it off, you know, put it back on the table. So there's nothing for us to do anymore.
So what what we do know is that we're gonna be looking at a committee reset, and uh, the the manager has been evaluating different um uh, boards, committees, commissions, um, the, and thinking about what's working, what's not working, gonna come back for uh, with some potential recommendations to council. Um, it doesn't have to include a governance committee, if that's not what it, or a charter committee, if that's not what the council wants to do. Um, and uh, and then I guess we can take up that item at that time.
Yeah, so I just wanna point out the two committees that have the majority of people that are not in the city are the Civic Center and the Cemetery Committees, is that correct? I believe the Cemetery Committee is the one that you were referring to, which only has one person. Is that correct?
I don't know, I'm not that intimately familiar with the makeup of committees, sorry.
That's okay. I'm, I took a quick look, I think that's it.
All right, so if we're done with that item, then.
Nope, I'm confused. So what are we doing?
We're doing nothing.
Nothing.
At all.
Yep, nothing. Let it go.
Seem to be doing a lot.
Exactly, nothing even moving forward in subsequent meetings.
Potentially, yeah.
Well, any councillor could request an item put on the agenda in the future meeting.
Right.
Okay, or it could come back as part of the committee reset that.
Okay. All right, so that takes us to roundtable, um. Councillor Wasak.
Uh, everyone get out and vote next Tuesday, as this is, I normally don't tell people how to vote, but this is my last opportunity before town meeting day, so I strongly encourage you to vote yes on Prop two and Prop five. Um, and in case anyone cares, you can check out my endorsements, and you should vote for the people that I've endorsed, cuz I think they're cool. But regardless, you should get out and vote, it's incredibly important, uh, and there's a lot of important races and issues on the ballot this year. I'll pass.
Councillor Stockwell.
A resident down the street from me had some water coming into their basement, which was new, and and their next-door neighbor also, which they take care of, had water coming into their basement, and you know, within hours, the city manager was there, Bill Ahern from, came to visit with them, so I just feel it was an excellent handling, I mean, they are, you know, there were, what do you do, there's water coming into your cellar, you can't see it, you know, where is it coming from, and I just thought it was an excellent response for, on behalf of the city employees. And I just thought it was an excellent response for, on behalf of the city employees.
Counsel Lozon.
Uh, thank you, well, once again, uh, Tracy and her volunteers did a wonderful job. Uh, with the, uh, Halloween celebration in our downtown, like I said, that incident was unfortunate, and I. I know it bothers Tracy and all the volunteers terribly, and I hope they don't take it too much to heart. Uh, with regard to the vote, I just want to thank all of the candidates, all of them, whoever they are, um. You know, it takes a lot to put yourself out there and spend the entire summer. Uh, you know, campaigning away from your family, away from your friends, missing all the fun stuff. So regardless of whether they're successful or not, I appreciate the fact that they ran and gave people options, small set.
Counsel Lozon, Counsel Deering.
Uh, get out and vote, um, really, make sure you get out and vote. I don't normally get on the soapbox about political things on council, but vote no for Proposition, uh, five, Article twenty-two. Um, it's too vague, it doesn't have enough direct language, and, uh, the word woman or abortion aren't even in it. Um, so to me, um, uh, that's my, my vote as, as a person, and, and that's my roundtable, thank you.
Counsel Shumville.
I echo the sentiment to please vote, I won't say how, I have a clear idea as to how I think it should be done. But that's not my call for anybody else. Still, um, there's a lot at stake, and I think there's a lot of thought that people. Really need to put into this and think about what the possibilities of the future or lack of the future could be.
The Brute.
Yep, so I would agree with everybody, obviously, get out there and vote, um, it's our civic duty. And it's our, it's a privilege that we have in the United States to do that, not all countries have that blessing, um. I'm with Counselor Shumville, um, I, I have my personal opinions about the items that are on there. Um, most people know them, I do not. Like discussing issues like that at city council chambers, as everybody knows. Um, but the most important thing is, is that you get out there and make your opinions known. Like Counselor Shumville, I know what I'm voting for or against or whatever. And, uh, I, I appreciate your sentiment on that, by the way. Yep, and with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Counsel Boot.
Cancelled out.
Yes, well, that's what I was, that's what I was. That's the reason why I think that's, that's good.
I would say it was a very memorable Halloween in Berry City, I really enjoyed handing out candy last night, uh, I think we went through about, uh. Five hundred pieces, uh, on the front porch and, uh, saw so many costumes, my favorite was a duck-billed platypus. Um, but also, uh, I appreciated, uh, a penguin that I saw from, uh, nearby resident. Um, and I would remind everybody that Veterans Day is coming up on the eleventh, and it'll be this America ceremony. Um, organized by the Veterans Council, I also wanted to congratulate, I should have done it earlier, but, um, I saw the Bobby Jeweler's. Gonna be celebrating their fiftieth year in business, that's huge, no small feat.
Wow.
And, uh, so great congratulations for them to be an anchor of downtown. Um, and, uh, and then really a Berry institution, so that's exciting. Last, uh, I echo everybody else, encourage, encourage everybody to, to get out and vote, oh, I think. We, I hope we have record turnout this year, so, and with that, I'll pass, um, that takes us. Uh, manager, you don't need an executive session, do you?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn by Counsel Boot and a second by Counsel Wasak, oh, it's nine, nine, uh.
Twelve.
Oh, yeah, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
All those opposed, the eyes have it.
Good night, good night online.